Good afternoon and welcome to the June 3, 2019 Committee of the Hall for the Revere City Council. This is one of the more pleasurable things that the city council gets to do and join in with Ms. Thai in reference to awarding these individuals the honor that they so duly deserve. You don't know how proud we are of each and every one of you. You're a representative of the future of the city of Revere. We hear a lot, a lot of good things about you. We've seen, I've been on the council for many years and the longer I serve, the more I witness some of the greatest young students you could ever come forward within a community. We are so lucky to have the support staff, the teachers at our schools that we have. We're also so lucky to have plants to go to that are first class, much differently when I was a student. So, one of our goals is through all the administrations, I think there were four administrations that made sure that we had the proper place to teach these kids the right way to go in life and how to proceed, but yet give them an opportunity for a first-class environment. So this evening, we're going to honor some of these individuals and it's the greatest pleasure that we get to see. And at this particular time, I'm going to call up Ms. Carol Thai and Jerry Visconti.
The introduction will be made by Bob Mara.
And the introduction is going to be made by none other than Robert Mara, my dear, dear friend.
I'm here as Mayor Origo's representative today. Mayor Origo is out of town today and asked if I would fill in for him. He had a few remarks that he wanted me to read and I'll briefly go through these. He speaks of George Colletta, former mayor and city councillor and the person after whom today's, several of today's awards are named. George Colletta was meticulous in the way he governed the city. He was committed to excellence and took great pride in acknowledging the accomplishments of Revere students. And he was passionate about public education. That is why it is fitting that the awards we give here today are named in his honor. Academic achievement always ranked very high in his goals for the city. The awards continue George Colletta's legacy and the way he valued public education. It's almost 10 years since Mayor Colletta passed away, but his legacy lives on. The awards today represent a continuation of over $10,000 that have been raised and given to students who are the top-ranked students in each of the, top-ranked 5th grader in each of the elementary schools in the city and the top-ranked 8th graders. And that's very significant because there is a correlation between the academic success that people are achieving in elementary and junior high school and what happens as they continue on into high school and hopefully to further education beyond high school. The mayor says, "To the award recipients, I congratulate you. Take heart in the meaning and purpose of today's awards and may you continue to strive towards the highest goals in education. Your future lies before you and we applaud you as the leaders for Revere's future." Thank you.
And I am here to share a little bit of information about my dear friend, George V. Colletta. If you came in the front door of this building and looked to your left, you would have found a plaque that reads, "George V. Colletta, 1927 to 2010. This building is dedicated to the memory of George V. Colletta, who served Revere for 50 years as mayor, councillor and school committee man. He has the honor of being the longest-serving elected official in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. May this serve as an enduring reminder of his loyal service and passionate dedication to the city of Revere." I think that deserves applause. So I remember George when I was a young teacher and he was a formidable personality and presence in every room that he graced with his presence. Sometimes you were a little scared of him, but you always knew that in the background there was love and there was passion for education and passion for kids. He served on the school committee for four years. At that time, I was the teachers' union negotiator and believe me, we didn't always agree. But somehow, we managed to come to a compromise or to some conclusion based on respect for each other, respect for city government and school committee issues and for each other, particularly on a very personal level, because I always knew that in his heart, he wanted to do what was right and I hoped that I was the same. He is the product of, he was the product of the Revere Public Schools. He went all through Revere Schools. He was the president of the Class of 1945, went on to be graduating from BU, eventually married his high school sweetheart, a member of his class, by the way, who was voted best personality in addition to being one of the smartest girls there. They had three daughters, Jennifer, Joanie and Liz, and two of them I was privileged to teach. And even when we were at odds with each other, he said, "I always knew you were best for my daughters and I always knew my daughters were best for you too." So, that was true. It was a pleasure to teach them. He was always devoted to community, always devoted to the importance of education. His mother and father had drilled that in him. His father was a firefighter. They were real Revere people. His brother Bill was a teacher and a coach at Revere High School for a good period of time and everyone in the family, from generations on down, knows that education is the most important thing there is. I always thought he would be a great teacher because he was a natural. So there was a time when we were arguing about the teacher's contract and he said, "Let me tell you a little bit about how this comes about." Now, I remember, I was an English teacher, not a math teacher, so I was somewhat lacking, more than somewhat, lacking in skills of developing a budget. But he had a giant library of books in his basement and he invited me in and gave me lessons that certainly served me well by the time I became superintendent of schools. So that, and he always had, well, we laugh because this was a running joke, like, "Does George have, you know, does he have enough money? Oh, you know George, he's got a bottom drawer down there." And anytime I'd say to him, "You know, there's a kid who's coming in and really needs the special services and I don't have any money left in my budget," you know, he might groan a little bit and make me ask a little more, but he never said no and always said, "You tell me what the kids need because they will have it from us. They are our future." Very forward-thinking. At a time when nobody was thinking about building schools, he had four new schools built. In the early 70s, before he finished his term, he had a plan for a new Revere High School. Now, that might seem hard for you to believe, but this high school, we called the New Revere High School for a long time. I'm looking forward to calling another building, the New Revere High School, in not too long a period of time, so. In his golden years, he thought about scholars like you. And he had provided for a scholarship for someone graduating from the Revere High School, but he wanted to reward hard work for scholarship that developed in the early years. I don't think there is an award like this anywhere else in the Commonwealth. I mean, to give to the first in the class or the best, the outstanding scholar, person, someone who cares about the community, to give that award to somebody in the 5th grade, I think that was so visionary. And then the 8th grade to do the same thing. And sometimes, there are even repeats, people who have run, won in the 5th grade, win again. And there are two here tonight, Kristi Lee and Elizabeth Messina. A round of applause for them. And you know, a round of applause for all of you, but not yet, that's okay. I just, I, I think people who knew George and sit here and see what this has accomplished and how it has brought all of you together and made us all able to celebrate. Thank you to the council, thank you council president and the other members of the council who are here for letting us come here at this showcase, this wonderful city hall, in this building, which was built with the hard labor, the taxes of poor people. And we hope that you folks will go on, be successful through high school, go to college, go to a great college, and then come back to Revere. Remember us. We need you. We hope you will share your intelligence and your hard work and your joy with us in future years. Thank you. And now I call upon Dr. Diane Kelly to deliver the certificates. And by the way, there's also a $200 check in with the certificate. I'm sure you won't have any trouble. Maybe you can buy your books for summer reading.
So just to let folks know how this is going to happen, I'm going to announce the name of each recipient. And as I do, we ask that the recipient come up with their principal, who's then going to tell us a little bit about the recipient so we can understand better how the folks on the committee came to choose each individual as the awardee. So our first recipient is Elizabeth Messina. Elizabeth is a second-time winner of the Colletta Award. And her principal, Joanne Willett, will come up and tell us a little bit about Elizabeth.
I'd like to thank some SBA staff members who are with us tonight and Mr. and Mrs. Messina and Elizabeth's younger sister for being here as well. And tonight, we honor Elizabeth, who is a two-time award winner of the George Colletta Award. And when asked to describe SBA's 2019 George V. Colletta Award winner, teachers use words like imaginative, altruistic, and all-star. Elizabeth Messina is a superb student, excelling in all academic areas, but she truly shines when she is able to be creative outside of school. Elizabeth plays piano, makes art, and dances with Boston Ballet. Nora Ephron said, "Your education is a dress rehearsal for life. That is yours to lead." If that's the case, we are really looking forward to what kind of life Elizabeth is going to lead. As one of the most well-rounded students to come through SBA, Elizabeth's quiet leadership and kindness will carry her through a successful four years at Newman Prep and will prepare her for whatever her future holds for her. Elizabeth is interested in studying space, which is appropriate since we think she is a star.
Dr. Glucci will come up to say a few words about Kristi.
This year's recipient, can I pick this up? This year's recipient for the RMA George V. Colletta Award is Kristi Lee. As Dr. Kelly and Ms. Thai mentioned, she is a two-time winner. She earned this award in the 5th grade as a member of the Garfield Elementary. Kristi earned a spot on this stage due to her amazing academic excellence. She finished first in the class and to be honest, she finished with an A-plus year-one average in almost every course she took at the Romney Marsh Academy. However, to stand here and describe Kristi based solely on her academic prowess would be an incredible disservice to the person that she is. Kristi is a special person in every possible way. As a bright-eyed, young 6th grader, she won the nomination to represent us in the Regional Spelling Bee and spelled a word that no 6th grader on the planet should be able to spell. I still remember it to this day. Kristi is a member of so many leadership clubs in our school. She is an 8th-grade Hawk Helper, which is a peer leadership group. She is a leader in our Gay-Straight Alliance Club and has put on a powerful presentation for both students and families at our school showcase. In just a few short days, Kristi is going to be traveling to Washington DC to represent the RMA in the National History Fair Finals. Not a poster board or a PowerPoint, Kristi and her classmates are performing a skit about Mother Jones' work as a child labor advocate back when children were being sent to work in the mills. Kristi plays a domineering mother in the skit who forces her child into labor and her classmate plays Mother Jones who thankfully intervenes. Kristi is so talented in every sense of the word. She was recently elected as an 8th grade aspirer and in her speech, she talked about carving out a personal identity in a family of very talented students. Well, Kristi, I can confirm tonight that you have done just that. Congratulations, you are truly one of a kind and we congratulate you for your award.
Her principal, Mr. Pachinski, will come up and say a few words.
Good afternoon and thank you all. I'd like to thank Mr. Matera and other staff members. I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Perrin for coming and of course, I'd like to thank Mia as well. This is a great opportunity to be here and to recognize all the hard work and dedication, commitment to education that all of you put in, as well as Mia, over the past number of years. At the Garfield, we subscribe to the Gator Code of respect, responsibility, and relationships. This year's recipient, Mia, has demonstrated and models all of those traits, as well as earned the highest GPA in the school. On top of earning the principal, or I'm sorry, making the principal's list every year, every quarter of her middle school career, Mia has also been a contributing member to the GMS community. She has been on the GSA for two years. She is on the Power of No in 8th grade and she played my daughter's favorite character, Mrs. Potts, this year in the production of Beauty and the Beast. My daughter's made extra sure that I got Mia's autograph on their program. So thank you very much for that, Mia, as well. Very excited. She is interested in studying the sciences and she'll be attending at Revere High School next year. So again, congratulations, Mia. This is an honor to be able to present this to you.
Principal Flynn will come up to say a few words about him.
I'm very excited to announce Ivan Tejada-Sarano as the next George V. Colletta Award recipient from the Wayland School. He is among one of our 5th graders who exemplifies all leadership characteristics, in particular, all of the seven habits of happy kids that we work through. When asking his teachers, "What stands out about Ivan?", they made sure to mention that he's the first to volunteer when anyone needs help. He treats everyone with kindness. His work exemplifies true dedication and perseverance, not to mention, his mastery connect scores were amongst the highest in our grade. In addition, his hard work, from his hard work, he's a good friend and a classmate and he works hard in the classroom, exceeding and meeting expectations on MCAS. He also earned second place in our school spelling bee this year. Outside of school, Ivan enjoys spending time with his friends and his family. In particular, he likes to play soccer, basketball, and video games. He enjoys his mom's cooking. His favorite food that she makes is salmon, but he does acknowledge that his absolute favorite food is lobster. For books, he loves to read A Wrinkle in Time. He explains that that's one of those books that he can read over and over and that it just doesn't get old. In the future, he hopes to be an architect because he loves to draw and create things and you might even find him creating buildings in his spare time. Thank you, Ivan.
And Principal Bonorigo will come up and say a few words about him.
John Begoli is this year's recipient of the George Colletta Award for Academic Excellence at Paul Revere School. An excellent student in all academic subjects, John's achievement in mathematics is particularly outstanding. Given his strong interest and ability in math, it's no surprise that John would like to study economics in college. He will attend Romney Marsh Academy in the fall, lucky Romney Marsh. His teachers, two of whom are here tonight, Mrs. Grassi and Ms. DeSenzio, and his other two teachers, Ms. Scully and Ms. Montefilio, think the world of John. While John is an exceptional Paul Revere scholar, his example in school as a role model must also be acknowledged. John may be counted on to do the right thing in every circumstance, from the classroom to the cafeteria to the point of Pines bus. His maturity, kindness, and respect for others are valued by both students and staff. In addition to these accomplishments, John is fluent in both English and Albanian. He shares his home with his parents who are here tonight and his younger brother, Ron. When he is not spending time on his studies, which is considerable, I believe, from what I understand, Ron enjoys playing soccer with his friends at the park or reading novels. He has family all over the world, including in Montreal and London, and hopes to visit relatives in Kosovo this summer. Paul Revere School is so proud to recognize John as one of our scholars and wish him the very best in all his future endeavors and hope he will come back to visit us and tell us all about them. Congratulations, John.
And Principal Lomas will come up to say a few words about her.
It's with great pleasure that I get to have Almaladi standing up here next to me. And Dr. Kelly, I asked her for pronunciation of her last name, so it's Adani, right?
Oh, thank you.
And she helped by saying, "It's like add a knee." And I was like, "Oh, thank you so much because I definitely not would have..." Thank you. Almaladi is this year's recipient of the Colletta Award from the Hill School. She started her elementary years at the McKinley, where she fondly remembers the raising of reader bags and how much that inspired her to love reading. She moved to the Hill and has terrific memories of releasing butterflies in 2nd grade, though she was very afraid of where they were going to land, and also has really great memories of marching to city hall to see the new building. Almaladi is a stellar student. All of her teachers say that she is the type of student that they would like to clone so they can have more of her in the future. She's an active participant in her classes, always highly engaged, and consistently scores among the highest in all standardized assessments. She likes the competition of school, working hard to always be her best. Her favorite subject is math because she likes the certainty of the answers and the directness of that content area. Almaladi's short-term goals include being a member of the Aspires Groups in middle school and eventually being the valedictorian of her class in 2026. In the future, she plans to study medicine and pursue a career as a nurse practitioner... In the future, she plans to study medicine and pursue a career as a nurse practitioner, a visiting nurse, or a doctor. In her spare time, she likes to read and often has two or three books going at the same time. She's inspired by her family, because they are hardworking and have always taken the time to help and support her. She loves to hear the stories that her mom tells about overcoming challenges. We couldn't be prouder of you, Omaladi. I'm just sad that I only got one year to get to know you and how amazing you really are. We'll miss you at the Hill, but know that your future will be successful and exciting, and congratulations on being the Hill winner of the Colletta Academic Achievement Award this year.
The next Colletta recipient is Mia Waldron. Her principal, Mrs. Humus Tracy, will say a few words.
It is my pleasure to announce Mia as the winner of this year's Colletta Award for the Lincoln School. She's a tremendously hard-working student who exceeded teacher expectations throughout the year. Her teachers could not say enough things about her. Not only did she work hard in all her classes and is just an all-around stellar student, she could always be counted on to help peers. She's a natural leader who loves social studies and had a staggering average of over 90% in her 5DP test. Her grades are absolutely amazing. In addition to exemplary leadership and academic skills, Mia is a dedicated competitive dancer, and she competes in Irish step dancing, often placing very high in national and international competitions. We congratulate Mia on her success. We wish her all the best in her future endeavors, and she'll be very missed at the Lincoln School.
The next Colletta Award recipient is Ethan Men. Ethan's principal, Mr. Koots, will come up and say a few words.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, and school committee members, and city councilors, for this amazing opportunity to recognize our superior students. And I also want to recognize Ethan's parents and sister, who were able to join us here today. Thank you for making the time. Ethan has been a Garfield Gator since kindergarten and is an active member of the Glee Club. This year, he went head-to-head in an epic battle with a classmate lasting over 50 words to determine who would be the spelling bee winner. Although Ethan did not win, the classmate went on to represent the Garfield Elementary School at the regional spelling bee, so that's a testament to what a great student and how knowledgeable Ethan is. Ethan takes his schoolwork very seriously, and in his own words, "Education is gold", right? On the fourth-grade MCAS, Ethan scored exceeding expectations on both the math and ELA portions of the test. He has been on Respect Core every trimester this year and is receiving mastery on all standards for fifth-grade students. Ethan entered fifth grade with a Lexile level, or reading level, of 1390, which is considered to be at the 10th-grade reading level, and he increased his Lexile 125 points this year and is now reading at a 12th-grade reading level. What an amazing achievement. Good job. As you can tell, Ethan is very driven, and he hopes to one day design video games or robots. In his free time, Ethan enjoys playing Fortnite and Minecraft. His teachers, Mrs. Riley, who is able to join us here today, and Mrs. Hairston, are extraordinarily proud to have Ethan as one of their students this year. And we all look forward to keeping up with Ethan and his accomplishments as he grows up and attends RMA next year. So, congratulations, Ethan.
And our final Colletta Award recipient for 2019 is Alana Trunkie. And her principal, Dr. Napier, will come up and say a few words.
Good afternoon. I stand before you today as a very proud principal, as I introduce Alana Trunkie as the Colletta winner for the Beechmont School. So, every day, we encourage our students to work hard and strive to be their best selves. We push them and inspire them to live up to their scholarly potential, and we're very successful at helping our students live up to high expectations. However, every now and then, we come across students that go well above and beyond those expectations in their pursuit of academic excellence and personal fulfillment. When others are looking for it, their eyes are to the stars. When many may be looking to conform to the status quo, they are imagining new possibilities. And when so many others are guided by external expectations, they are driven by an internal compass that guides their thoughts and their actions. And Alana is one of these individuals. She consistently scores at the highest levels on school, district, and state assessments. Her Lexile reading is on par with what we expect for students in high school, and she approaches these challenging assignments with a thoughtfulness and a level of intellectual rigor that is quite impressive. Beyond being an outstanding student, Alana is an outstanding person with character traits we wish were more abundant in our adults, our leaders, and our politicians. Present company excluded. Her teachers, Mr. Gattia, Ms. Anderson, and Ms. Merchant, who are in the back of the room here, state that Alana is a peacemaker with the ability to empathize, to be friendly and respectful to her peers. She gets things done and never forgets her responsibilities. She always has a smile on her face and has a wonderful effect on the class climate. She and her family live by the motto, "Don't lie, cheat or steal, move forward, but never leave anyone behind." Alana loves a challenge. That is why math is her favorite subject. She enjoys spending time grappling with complex problems and puzzles. She is an avid reader who loves fantasy series. She also wants to learn more about how the universe works, so she loves challenging problems, likes to contemplate the impossible or the incomprehensible. So, therefore, I wasn't surprised to hear that Alana's goal is to become an astrophysicist and attend either Harvard or MIT. Alana is an amazing student, and the Beechmont School is proud to have her as our Colletta Award recipient.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Gravolisi, and I graduated from Revere High School in 2006. And Kay Romano, whom many of you remember as a longtime principal and educator here and longtime chair of the Scholarship Committee for Revere, asked me to fill in for her this year as she's stepping away, and it was a great honor for me to do so. So, I'll be very brief, as I know one of our award recipients needs to go soon, and I'd love to make sure that she has a chance to come on up. So, without further ado, I know we're going to say a few words about Kay Romano, and I'll turn it over to John Powers to do so after we bring the award recipients up. The City of Revere Scholarship is awarded to exemplary Revere High School seniors on the basis of academic excellence, financial need, and an essay that they write. And I have to tell you that we were all blown away by the quality of the essays. It speaks well to the quality of the education they're receiving here in Revere. But we did have to settle upon two winners, who each won $5,000 scholarships to support them in their further education. So, the first winner is Jenna Wells. Jenna... Jenna's an accomplished student athlete at Revere High School. She'll be attending Merrimack next year and studying education. She wants to be a teacher. And her essay was tremendous about the importance of community, about serving the community and what it means to her. So, Jenna, we are proud to award you with the City of Revere Scholarship. And the second recipient of a $5,000 City of Revere Scholarship is going to be attending UMass Dartmouth next year and studying nursing. She had another tremendous essay about how grateful she was to come from overseas and not only to have the opportunity to come to this country, but to have the opportunity to come especially here in Revere, where she felt so well-supported and had great opportunities to thrive. Congratulations to Devna Langat, and I hope I pronounced that right. Congratulations, and I would like to... So, I'm going to briefly turn it over to John Powers to say a few words about Kay Romano, who served so admirably as chair of the City of Revere Scholarship Committee for many years.
Good afternoon. Eighteen years ago, when I was attending a graduation exercise at Revere High School with George Colletta, he mentioned one thing to me, that there were no awards for the Revere Community Scholarship. We found out that the money was sitting in an account, not drawing, barely drawing interest, if that, and no scholarships were given out. So, a year later, George and I put a motion before the city council to activate the scholarships. And as a result of that, we've been doing this now for about 18 years. Close to $125,000 has been awarded to kids in this community, and that's all money that people send in, donations. And when that happened, we needed someone that could keep the records, make sure that everyone was thanked for the donation they made, et cetera, et cetera. So, there was one person that was around to do that, and she was elected. And that was Catherine Romano, who had just finished, I believe, five decades of service to the City of Revere as a teacher, an assistant principal, and a principal. Her devotion to the children in this city has always been positive, never questioned, always there to do the right thing. So, I feel, I would feel very remiss tonight if I didn't award, on behalf of the city council, a certificate of appreciation for her efforts. And believe me, they were efforts. People send in a dollar, $5, $100. You have to keep track of that. You have to know where the money's going, and she did an excellent job doing that. And I think she's going to be really missed. Before I read the certificate, I'd also like to mention some of the other people on the committee. Joe Gravolisi is the chair, of course Catherine Romano, George Anzoni, the treasurer, Carol Ty, a school committee woman and former superintendent, Dr. Gennaro Cattaldo, Diane Finn, the director of guidance, Diane Kelly, superintendent, and of course, Mia Bryan Arigo. And we are the people who meet and make a determination as to who is going to get an award. And the awards, I believe, as Carol alluded to, are based on the academic standing and the family unmet need. So, this is one of the greatest things that I consider as a member of the city council being involved in. It's helping a kid, it's helping move a kid forward. Thank you. I'm not going to read that now, that certificate. It reads, "City of Revere, certificate of commendation, an acknowledgment of her unwavering lifelong commitment to education, special recognition is hereby awarded to Catherine A. Romano. Since the inception of this City of Revere Community Scholarship Program in 1994, there have been 34..." have been 34 scholarships totaling $123,000." And that may be even $10,000 more tonight. Yeah, it'll be $133,000, enabling each of the recipients to pursue a degree at the college of his or her choice. The Community Scholarship Program would not be possible without Mrs. Romano's dedication in serving as chair of the committee since the first scholarship was awarded in 2001. Mrs. Romano has been involved with education, educating students in Revere her entire career, first as a teacher, then as an assistant principal, and lastly, as a principal. Though she retired from the Revere Public School system after 45 years, her love and passion for education is everlasting. In witness to the effort, this certificate of commendation is gratefully bestowed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this third day in June in the year of our Lord 2019 and of the Independence of the United States of America 242nd. It's signed by Council President Arthur Ganasso, Mayor Brian Arigo, and certainly our city clerk, Ashley Melmick. Catherine would have been here tonight. I knew, I talked to her earlier. She's had a little case of the flu, so she's resting and as she should be. And again, I can't emphasize the dedication that Catherine Romano put in the Scholarship Committee. She was there every single time, not only keeping records, but evaluating the students that had put in applications. Thank you very much.
So just to close out our presentation of awards tonight, I want to thank all of the teachers and other administrators, in addition to the principals, who took the time to be here tonight. I know they're here because they value the relationships that they have with your children, and I'm just so proud that they get to call those kids students of their own and contribute in some way to their future success. So thank you all for taking the time out of your very busy schedules to be here tonight, and thank you for the families for all of their help. And just one more plug for the Revere Scholarship. I know, as Councilor Powers mentioned, all of that money comes from donations that folks fill out on their annual tax form for the city. So really, for the high school scholarships, we owe a debt of gratitude to all of the residents of Revere who sent in those $5, $10, whatever the case may be, and allow us to give $5,000 scholarships to two high school kids. We really, really, really appreciate that contribution. So thank you, and thank you for the council for all of their support, as always.
This concludes the committee of the whole, June 3, 2019, and thanks each and every one of you for attending. We appreciate it.